Call the meeting to order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, changes or additions to the agenda?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, special presentations and appearances, service awards.
Yes, sir.
Mr. David.
Mr. Chairman, as you make your way down, it's my pleasure, if my math serves me right, we have 110 years of service to recognize.
And that's just me.
First, I'd like to recognize Russell Henderson, who's receiving a five-year service award. He's Assistant Commonwealth Attorney.
You have to stand on the X, although there is no X. Congratulations and thank you. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to recognize Aaron Kane, who's receiving a five-year service award. Aaron's the Director of the Department of Public Works.
Thank you, congratulations.
Next, we'd like to recognize Robin Kopa, who's receiving a 10-year service award, and she's a part-time library aide.
Thank you.
Next, we'd like to recognize Mary Lindsay, who's receiving a 15-year service award, and she's a part-time collection attendant.
Fifteen years, fantastic.
Next, we would like to recognize Donna Sears, who's receiving a 15-year service award as the Chief Deputy for the Clerk of the Circuit Court's Office.
Thank you.
Next, we would like to recognize Nancy Orndor, who's receiving a 20-year service award. She is a collection attendant, part-time collection attendant.
Twenty years.
Yes, yes.
Two.
A long time.
It's a long time. Thank you, congratulations.
Next, we would like to recognize James Dillo, who's receiving a 20-year service award. He too is a part-time collection attendant.
Great, thank you. I'm over here standing on my X. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, those who weren't able to attend today, Ryan Brown, who's going to receive a five-year service award. He's with the Orange County Sheriff's Office as a Deputy Investigator. And Roberta Perry, receiving a 15-year service award. She's a part-time library aide, and that concludes our recognition today.
Okay, congratulations to all of you, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda.
Salute.
Okay, and a motion, second, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
See, no new business, old business, aviation, aviation easement acquisition, he tried to say.
Mr. Delta. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Apologize for the short timeframe you've been given to look at this, but just trying to get everything together. Anyway, you have a memo in front of you. And the bottom line to this is, we have some landowners that we've been negotiating with to try to acquire easements, and they have requested that we physically identify the trees on their properties that are in question, that are obstructions. So I asked our consultant to give us a proposal to do that. And I included Delta's proposal along with their subconsultant, Greenway Engineering. So what I'd like to try to do is explain a little bit, it's not necessarily spelled out in my memo. So Greenway proposed three different actions. The first of which is to identify each tree on the ground. They'll put, they'll actually put a little plaque in the tree, identify everything that they can on that, so that physically the landowner can look at each tree, it's got a plaque on it. I understand that's a tree that either has to be trimmed or removed, and it's obstruction. What the landowners also asked for was that we actually paint an elevation in the trees where they have to be cut. Greenway did also give us a proposal to do that work, and that's item number three, it's $25,200. I am not recommending that we do that, and here's the reason why. What we, what we, the plaques we put on the trees, they're pretty permanent, and so we don't normally do this kind of survey work until we're ready to cut the trees. But we're not ready to cut the trees because we don't have the easements yet. But we can do, we can do the first item that Greenway proposed to do, and I feel fairly confident that that will remain in place long enough for us to get to the point where we're cutting trees. What we would mark, painting up in the trees, $25,000, there's no way that it's going to stay there until we're ready to cut the trees. And here's, here's the downside, all of this is eligible for grant reimbursement one time. So the FAA would likely agree to letting us mark the tops of trees, but then when we come back, we'll have to resurvey it to cut the trees, and then we're not going to get reimbursed a second time. So that's why I'm not recommending that we take on that expense at this point. I think that in talking to Delta, that we can stand at the tree, it's got a plaque on it, it's marked, and Delta can use a laser, and at no cost to us, and pretty much show the landowners where the trees will have to be cut. So, having said all that, my recommendation is that we execute Delta, well, there's one other thing I need to explain. As you can see, Greenway's proposal for item number one was $14,560, but we have some, we have some budget underruns in our current agreement with Delta that will cover most of that cost. So the only additional money we need is $4,700 to be able to do that first item in Greenway's proposal. And lastly, I'll say that I always get the FAA's buy-in to this to make sure that it's reimbursable. I've had a phone conversation with the FAA on this, but I do not have anything in writing from them, and our representative is on vacation this week, so it's going to be next week before I hear from him. I feel confident that they're going, that FAA will approve this, but I wanted the board to know I don't have that yet. So I did write the motion, should you guys agree to move forward, that it would be contingent on the FAA's approval and Tom's approval as to form on the documents. That's a whole big mouthful, so if you have questions, I'll try to answer.
Kurt, when we identify specific trees, if there are any other trees that aren't that height but are going to grow to that height, how do we deal with that?
Right now, what the landowners, we don't do anything with that. The landowners have asked us just to identify the trees that we'll have to cut right now. So we have aerial survey of all of these properties, and we know which trees from the aerial survey are obstructions and which are not. And we also have data on how far, the trees that aren't obstructions, how far below the surface they are. But at this point in time, and really, the FAA and the state won't reimburse us any money to do anything with a tree that's not an obstruction.
So we remove the...
We don't do anything.
Remove the obstruction, and then it becomes upon us to continue to, if any of those trees grow above that, we would have to remove the tops of those as well?
Provided that we have the easements to do it, yes, sir.
So the easement covers trees other than ones that are marked?
Correct. Yes, the answer to that is the easement pretty much covers the entire property that's under the surface that we're trying to protect, so.
I would move that we do all the fancy words you said.
I'll second. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Department Director of Constitutional Officer reports, Office on Youth Collection Procedures, Alicia.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you is a memo from our office to request the establishment of a collection procedure for our accounts that we turn over to the Treasurer's Office. For the memo, this usually happens with our childcare accounts as well as our CSA accounts when families have become delinquent. In talking to the Treasurer, it's kind of where this request came from. We had conversations back and forth about how long we should collect on these accounts, and we realized we did not have a procedure in place for this. After further discussion and some advice from Tom, the state allows up to five years, but in discussion with the Treasurer and Crystal Dixon, who's in charge of the collections, that kind of goes away after about two years, our chances of collecting. And so in the proposed policy, we did say, after two years of the Treasurer's Office trying to collect, because our office also tries to collect before we even turn it in, we would like to be able to close these accounts without having to come back every single time that we do that. It would just be a standing policy. We could provide you a quarterly update if you'd like to know what we've done. But at this time, we're just requesting that we have this policy put in place so that we can move forward with cleaning out some of the accounts. We have accounts still on file at the Treasurer's Office from 2015 that we know we're not going to be able to collect on. She can't find employment or any information for us to collect on.
When you say that we have some that are daycare, how soon after, when they become delinquent on daycare, do we stop providing the service?
Most of the ones that we have right now for daycare are about, the most recent ones are about a week's worth of charges. If they don't pay, like we are supposed to collect ahead of time, then we just continue services.
Okay, right away, all right.
We try to do it right away so we don't accrue large bills like we have in the past. I know this, you can't see the names, but this is the list that we get from the Treasurer's Office. This part is childcare, these are the CSA accounts, so you can see which ones we turn over more often.
Now, the CSA accounts, we say that we need to continue providing critical services even though they are delinquent.
Yes, sir.
Are these the services that involve the private providers, or are these the ones doing...
It's both. The CPMT also just redid their copay policy, and the way they wrote the policy and approved it, it should cut down on, unfortunately, how many people have copays, because we're finding they can't afford them with our previous policy. And so it should cut down, we shouldn't have as many that even go to the Treasurer's Office anymore. So we're hoping doing both of these, we can get it cleared out.
And what kind of services do we continue for these? Do we continue all, the whole range of services?
We do, because we're trying to keep that child in their home. Some of the kids are mandated, like special education day placements. We can't pull them out because they can't pay. And that one's kind of, let me rephrase that, we can't do a copay on this. Most of them are for the community service, but doing the community service, we're trying to keep them in the community and not have them go to a day placement, which is more expensive for the county, so, if that makes sense.
And I assume that, and maybe this is a question of the county attorney as well, that our only recourse in terms of these delinquent accounts is just to keep asking for a while and then sort of give up, I mean, is that...
Well, I mean, we can proceed with, we can collect it through the state, you know, withholding tax refund.
And that's what the Treasurer's Office does for us.
And they also...
And they can also pull, have, set it up with your employer to do automatic garnishments for us as well. And that's how she's been collecting, but if we can't find an employer, we can't get anything. And some of these people don't get tax returns. I do know the Treasurer's Office, their, I guess, governing body, are trying to look at doing federal withholdings as well. That has not been approved yet, but if it does, that will definitely help us.
You've shown the amounts here that are, that you're willing to close out. How much are actually owed in each of those categories?
I don't have the total for each, but overall, both categories is about $4,344.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I guess the only question is that the, do we have the ability to see in advance when there is a problem developing such that we can minimize the impact on both the family and the county from that matter, in terms of collecting? I mean, is there, is there a process or a procedure in place that we can see that things are getting either paid more slowly or not at all, or whatever the situation is, and catch it early?
We provide due dates. Our CSA accounts, when they come in, our administrative assistant sends out a letter, and once we get them set up with their copay, if they have one, they are due by the fifth. So if they're not into us within the couple days, we start calling. The parents also have an option to request a review of their case and extenuating circumstances where we could, as CPMT, take away their copay if they really can't afford it but still need the services. So with that, we do. With childcare, it's kind of hit and miss with some families. We do work with them, with CSA and other programs, so we kind of know, and so we talk to those parents. Hey, what can we do to help? DSS is right down the hall, let's do childcare assistance if you afford, you know, if you qualify. So we do try to work with them. But since the board gave direction in 2008 to do ahead of time, if they haven't paid their fee, we stop them from coming, because we don't want them to have a $500 bill or a $1,000 bill, which we did have in the past.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So we try to cut it off quickly.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions of Alicia?
Will we approve the collection policy?
Second.
I wish you'd do the second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, real estate and personal property tax exemptions for nonprofits, Ms. Bradley.
After our work session at our last meeting, the board had expressed a desire to implement a renewal process for all of our properties that are tax exempt. The code allows you to do that, Section 58.1-3605. Allows you to adopt an ordinance, give those folks 60 days' notice, and then require a triennial renewal of their tax exempt status application. So I've laid out a timeline here that I think would work, and also we're trying to make this concurrent with our general reassessment that's going on. So if the board is agreeable, we could advertise for a public hearing, hold a public hearing on September 10th, and then still have enough time to notify the people, send them the application, and give them that 60-day window to submit their renewal application in time for January 1st.
Okay. Do you happen to know, this is a belated question, I'll acknowledge, but we separate real estate from tangible personal property, and do we have any idea what happens to tangible personal property now? I mean, is it, is it treated as a perpetual exemption, as far as you know?
Pretty much, yes.
My only question was that with this three-year renewal, some personal property, you know, might not be around even earlier than that. Is there, is there any kind of a notification process that, where we can pick it up? And I suppose if it's a licensed vehicle, there's information.
Well, and the form, the form does ask them to list the personal property. So if we're doing the three-year renewal, it sort of does, you know, kind of prompt them to say if they have a different vehicle, you know, if one needs to come off, that sort of thing.
If they buy a new vehicle or get new personal property, they come in and have to ask for the exemption on it then?
Normally, if it's tied to that account, you know...
It was a little, that's, that's the one that turns, might turn more frequently.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking that, you know, you may not know it until the first of the year of next year, when the renewals, when that would actually become taxable. At that point, they may say, oops, I got a tax bill for it.
And really, the question is, do we want to force them to update when there's an event like that? Or just catch it whenever the three-year turns? And I don't know that I have a preference, one way or the other. I'm not suggesting that we force them to come in all the time.
Administer via to keep trying to do it.
I would think.
Stick with a three-year cycle.
I think it would be the best.
I think so, but I'm, somewhere I read something that caused me to be concerned about whether or not we were clear enough on that, on the personal property.
On the application?
Well, it might have been on the instructions. I don't see it now.
That's going to be a big batch of reforms that come in every, every...
Every three years.
Twenty, 2020 and 2023 and...
I did check, and it's about 335 properties right now.
And Commissioner thinks she can handle all of those as a lump sum for, to initiate this?
Yeah, she seemed to think so. I got her to review everything before I turned it in, and she was, seemed to be okay with it. You know, I think it'll be a form letter that goes out with the application form. But, you know, it shouldn't be too hard to make the notice. I'm sure it'll be all the ones that come back, you know, as undeliverable or whatever, those follow-up things.
I found the language, I see why I didn't find it. It's, it's actually on the form in the declaration, the very last one. It says, "I further certify that any change in the use of any property listed in this application will result in immediate notification to the Office of Commissioner." And my question was, what does that mean with respect to personal property?
Sell the vehicle?
Yeah, or retire it or whatever. I mean, it, because it said, what it says is you run the risk of losing your exemption if you don't provide the notification, and I don't think that's what we mean.
Well, I mean, I think for things like vehicles, and I'm, you know, not as well-versed on the, you know, the inner workings of the Commissioner's Office, but on the vehicles at least, I think that information is coming through from DMV.
So if they sell it, it'll show up on whoever bought it's next year's January 1st?
Right, and I just don't know a whole lot about how they work those files once they come into the...
That's the fact, that probably would be the majority of these, although there may be some other equipment like computers or things like that.
Probably mostly vehicles. Well, I just, I think we are really focused on the real property when we're talking about change of use, much more than we are the personal properties. But the form does say, "Any property listed," so you might have a conversation with Renee about that when the final form is produced, to make sure we're saying what we mean there.
We don't want a situation where somebody sells a car, didn't notify us, and now is in trouble of losing their tax exemption.
Or is concerned that they might be even, so.
Maybe, maybe Tom's got some better wording for that.
Or they could say, "The use of any real property," you know, that's another potential fix. I don't know what we meant, is...
Right, and I'm glad to talk to her about that. We do, we have some time, you know, with working out the kinks in the application while we're sort of going through this process with the advertisement and the notifications, so we can definitely tighten that up.
All right, any other questions of Linda?
I would make the motion that we go ahead and authorize the publication and for the common, for the attorney and Commissioner of Revenue to look at that last segment for any changes that would avoid confusion.
Okay, there, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, county attorney report?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, county administrator report?
I have no report, gentlemen.
Oh, right. Board comment? Anyone?
Yes.
Okay.
I have one. A while back, we moved the public comment section to 7:00 PM at the request of a former supervisor. It's never come to fruition that anything has really been changed by us moving it to 7:00. No one shows up still, so I would ask that we put it back to 6:00 o'clock. And then at that point, if nobody comes, then we don't sit here for an hour waiting for no one to come.
Certainly, that's the history, no question. I mean, it's been a while since...
The only difficulty with that is when you do have an issue that comes up, and it does come up from time to time, you could have 15 people out here who want to talk. And so that's going to pretty much blow up our schedule of having a closed session and eat dinner and so forth. That's the problem with the 6:00.
Otherwise, we'd stay in closed session for two hours. This way, we're forced to come back down here by 7:00.
I mean, that's, if you, certainly, there's no problem if there's nobody talking. You could schedule it whenever you want to, but...
Do we not typically have that issue if there's a public hearing? Isn't that usually when we have public comment?
We could have somebody coming a public comment independent of...
No, I mean, for instance, 6:15 road issue, we had a lot of people talking about that. And from time to time, an issue comes up that you get, not just one person, but you get...
Six, eight.
Yeah, you get any number.
I don't see where that interferes, the way the current schedule interferes with us. I mean, we're going up for a closed session at 6:00, we're coming back down here, and if there's nobody here, we just quickly pass whatever resolution for the closed session and...
You know, I would, I would move that, instead of doing it at 6:00, if you want to do it earlier, you know, move it, move it earlier, move it to 5:10.
Or 5:30 maybe?
Yeah, or whatever.
5:30 would be fine, I would just, then basically, we have Jeff's got to come back, staff has got to hang around when realistically...
It's not something we can't change back.
I would vote for, I, I, I think 6:00 is bad, because we were scheduled to break at 6:00. I mean, it doesn't, doesn't really follow that you schedule something at 6:00, so I would just, you know, 5:30...
Try 5:30 for a while.
If it delays everything else, we can do it after.
And we could, you know, we could even, I mean, that's no problem in terms of the rest of our, because we can just hit 5:30, no matter what's going on, we stop the public comment, and then come back.
Okay. You don't do that, do you?
So, Mr. Chairman, what members of the board, what we'll do on the 27th of August's agenda, we will put an item for public comment and list it just like we do to start approximately 5:30, or just say 5:30.
Say 5:30, 5:30. I mean, we want to, we want to be prompt about it, and if someone is here to speak, we want to give them the opportunity at one time, okay? All right. Any other board comment?
I got another, I got an email from Jim Lagraft, the guy, he's the new head of the Community Services Board. He came out to our animal shelter to adopt the dog and was extremely complimenting the staff and everybody else for his interaction with that, I mean, to the point of sending me an email.
Nice, good.
I would just like to comment on the school convocation last week.
The hand-holding part.
With the exception of being forced to hold hands with people I really don't even know. It was, it was, it was enjoyable. I particularly wanted to give a shout out to the, to the, I think they call them the O C singers, the, they were outstanding. I mean, they sounded like professionals to mine professionally, or the band, the R T C. And, and just, I thought it all went off very well and was, was, it's actually the first convocation I've been to, and it was, I enjoyed it.
Big was wonderful.
Yes.
Yeah, Bill Curry was the guest speaker, he was, he was really, really moving, no other way to describe it, he really was.
Just, just a comment, I'm not the world's best mathematician, but we received the V S A P annual report. And I'm just curious if you go down to page eight. The third line from the bottom, I believe, or the fourth line from the bottom. Under Virginia alcohol-related crashes, sixty-six point five percent of D U I convictions were male and twenty-two point six percent were female.
Oh, you better stop right there.
I was unaware that the state had gone to a gender-neutral position to allow eleven point nine percent to not be classified
Maybe they were, maybe they were simply unable to
Uh, uh, yeah, it just, it struck me as rather odd, I'm, I'm sorry, but I just
So you mean Pat was the offender the rest of the time?
You're reading it, you're reading it far too closely.
Well, you know, I just, I just found it interesting.
I think it's, I think it's, New Hampshire now has seventeen choices under the category of gender for you to check. I couldn't wrap my mind around that many, but I think it's, I think it's New Hampshire has seventeen.
Want to be?
Yeah, that has to be what it is.
I would bet you that most of, nobody checked the right blocks on the form.
Right, but, yes, once again, our wonderful state government at work, so, I just
I actually have one item, as you know, we approved the schedule for the new C I P plan development as part of the consent agenda. I've had a couple of phone conversations with Chair of the School Board about developing a school C I P. You recall when we approved the C I P for this year, for most of the school projects, we, we just left a placeholder there because of need to do some scoping work and stuff. I proposed to sort of kickstart that process, that I sit down with the, the good chair lady and have some conversations about putting together a process to, to get to the point where we've got a, the ability to create a school C I P, so maybe someday Brian and I and, and Ms. Page and and Doc Schnee will have a couple of cups of coffee to try to work out a process more than anything else at this point, so. I think that's the, the right next step, there are a lot of moving pieces that need to be sorted through. At some point, we're going to have to get to the point of rekindling various committees to work on the details of that, but right now, we have to find a place to start that's not obvious, frankly, so. I, I, I think that's, that's sort of my recommendation, the, the next thing to try, so. Without objection, I'll try to find some time to meet with her and kick that off. All right, any other board comment? Any question on the information items? Other than the District Nine report?
Just a comment, just a comment.
You got too much time on your hands.
Yeah, boy, spending too much time in airport lobbies and stuff. All right, appointments to, to commissions and committees?
I would like to reappoint Sonia Capell to the Barbersville Village Overlay District Committee.
Okay. Any others? All right, all in favor of that appointment, say aye?
Aye.
All right. Calendar, schedule a public hearing for Z T A nineteen oh one.
Chairman, if I could just say, this is mixed use, this is one through the planning commission, we double advertise this to get this to you all as quickly as we could, so that's why it's there.
So it's already been advertised?
Yes, sir.
All right. And then a public hearing for September tenth for the road access and road network design.
Remember, that was the one with the distances between
Right.
access points and bringing them back in line with B dot standards.
Everybody all right with that, both those? Okay. All right, with that. Ready?
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. Discussion consideration of the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific employees of the public body. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or the disposition of publicly-held real property, where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of public body concerning a tower site. Consultation of legal counsel pertaining to actual probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of public body concerning Orange volunteer rescue. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters, or further provision of legal advice by such counsel concerning ordinance changes, contract, a contract amendment, private road issues, and the town of Orange. And whereas pursuant to Sections two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, A one, A three, A seven, and A eight of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County that hereby authorizes discussion of forced aid matters in closed meeting need that as a motion.
So moved.
Second.
In favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, we're in talk.
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements? And that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Johnson?
I wouldn't let it.
Aye.
Tom, do you?
He had lamas on it.
Somebody a long time ago that just said no.
Okay, let's see. Let's go back to regular agenda and continue the county administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, members of the board, you have been having discussions amongst yourselves, certainly with me and with developers in, in, in Orange County that I think collectively, there's frustration and exasperation with Department of Environmental Quality concerning stormwater management plan approval and the whole processing of stormwater management plans. If you recall, back in twenty fourteen, twenty thirteen, the state amended the state stormwater management law to essentially say, localities, if you are not a M S four community, which are little large communities, or a Chesapeake Bay community, you either can adopt a stormwater management ordinance program yourself, or you could opt out, and the State Department of Environmental Quality will administer that on the locality's behalf. Orange County's board at that time, like a lot of other localities, opted out. In fact, I've given you a list of, as of twenty seventeen, all the communities that are opted out.
Why?
I'm, I'm sorry.
I have three what looks like the same.
Thank you.
Actually, four.
Four.
Four pages that all look the same.
Oh, goodness.
Your co-later needs to be fired.
We were just talking about that earlier today.
Here, here are two correct ones.
I have Dinwiddie. I'll trade you.
I've got Orange, 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 and Orange.
I'll trade you a Dinwiddie for a Stanton.
Well, I, I
I've got, I've got three Abingtons there.
I'll take an Abington for
I've got a, I've got a Manassas Park.
You've got an Abington, okay.
You need a Stanton?
There you go, you need a Manassas Park.
Anybody else need a Dinwiddie?
I've got another Abington.
This is a YouTube video, literally.
I, I feel kind of uncomfortable because I apparently actually have one that's right.
I have one at home that's right, it's just not
Mr. Johnson, you're my favorite.
All right.
Do we have Dinwiddie, Manassas, and Stanton, are those the three?
Before, before
Abington.
It's four.
You need an Abington, you have all the Abingtons?
I have an extra Abington.
No, they need one, Crozier needs one.
I call, I call for the, everybody later calls
I've got a Paco's and, and a Hamilton and a Burkeville.
I don't, I need a, I need somewhere between Dinwiddie and Stanton.
I will make sure you all have a complete and accurate
Would you need a Manassas Park?
You need, you need a Manassas.
That would be about Charlottesville, halfway between Stanton and Dinwiddie.
We're just doing this to pass time till seven o'clock, you understand?
I'll go on with my report.
Yeah, first twenty minutes, right?
Suffice to say, there is a list that exists that has the localities that opt-in and opt-out. Mr. Johnson possesses that list. You all have, have asked over the last number of months to see potentially what it would take for the county to actually administer its own program, but using the model that we are using for the Cypress Creek four-hundred-acre solar farm, where we've hired a third-party engineering firm to actually do our work as agents of us, but still allowing the authority to rest with, with the county, and that's going well, as, as you all know. I've done, in the last several weeks, a pretty, pretty deep dive on what it's going to take. I've actually talked to the Green County staff member who administers their local program, they're an opt-in, and I think they're under G's in that list. But I, I, I found out that, that he's not an engineer, he does it in-house, and it's much similar to where myself or Sandra Thornton review subdivision plaits, and we're not surveyors or engineers, but we're applying the county's ordinance to, to licensed professionals' work. What it's going to take is for you all to adopt an ordinance and a program, and there's a big checklist that D E Q goes through with all the elements that have to go into it, and it's not, it's, it is, it's a paper-intensive thing. It's got to go through a process, but at the end of the day, it's very doable, there are communities of our size that are doing it now. I've talked to Culpeper County, my counterpart, John Eggersen, and they're, they're having similar discussions up there, and so just to kind of test the temperature. Louisa County is an opt-out, I didn't
They're D E Q, they do it through D E Q.
But what, I, I also came across, just actually Kurt came across this, was emailed. King George County just concluded an R F P for this, generally, this kind of services for stormwater management, where they're going to be a third-party engineer. I've understood from Fred Prival with Wiley Wilson, who got this, this to us, this is actually a second generation of, of services. So I know the county administrator there, enough to pick up the phone and give him a call, used to, used to work there.
The irony is so thick you could cut it with a knife.
Oh, it is, and so I guess where I'll stop is, I'm at a point that I think we can absolutely go for this. I would like for you all's authority to issue an R F P to see if we might be able to, to find a firm that could provide these services of helping develop implement and manage a stormwater management program, understanding that we've got to get D E Q sign off on all this before we transition. Last thing I'll say, before I'll let you all give me some direction. I've called and emailed the head of the state stormwater management program, the person that does this, looking for guidance on, okay, can you give me a staff person? How, we, we're, the board is considering revisiting this issue of opting out, and can I start a con, a conversation and start a coordination with somebody at the state level? I've not heard back from them yet.
No reaction from him at all?
They were out until last Friday, it's Wednesday, so I'm going to give them until tomorrow, Thursday, before I start going back to them. I'll stop.
Couple of things that, that, I, I looked through the materials that, that addressed the, the need for an ordinance, and it's, it's very prescribed. I mean, basically, every comma and dot is, so there must be a model or some examples out there somewhere, so
They have a model.
The creation of the ordinance and, and that should be pretty much procedural, because it, it, the way I looked at it, we have little or no flexibility in terms of the ordinance language and the requirements, is that, is that
The model ordinance contains all the requirements, and so that's pretty much what everybody's adopted as a model.
And, and the second thing is that it, it seemed to me that what I've heard so far is that, you know, on certain projects, if we feel confident, you know, our staff could do the approvals, if it's a small-scale kind of thing. But we also have, should have the ability to, for larger projects, more complex situations, to reach to some outside organization where even D E Q will rely on the professional license and credentials for, for the approval, and basically, D E Q stands down and is not directly involved, so therefore, they're no longer the bottleneck.
And their, their only part of this process would be do a program review, and that's periodic, and that's just what we do with our erosion semi-control program. We're subject to their auditing and make sure we're administering it correctly.
I'm, I'm sure there are downsides, but based on what many of us are hearing from our local landowners and businesses about the bottlenecks and the problems with D E Q, I, I think we have to take a hard look at this as a, as a, as a way forward, just because it's, it's not getting better, it's getting worse.
So if we, if we have a more complex permit requirement, we can transfer that, and we could use a, a, an engineering firm to do that for us.
Paid for by the applicant.
And the applicant would pay to, to make that happen.
There's also a, a maintenance function with periodic inspections that D E Q is supposed to be doing, but we would be able to engage the firm at, at the owner of the B M Bs requirement. There's, this wheel appears to be invented by King George, and it's not, it's not too different than, than some other services that we go to third parties for. John Eggersen and I had this conversation that it was appealing to him, this concept of hiring an engineering firm to help start, you know, do all the paperwork, get us ordinances and, and the forms and everything, so that we can manage the program, the one D E Q's approval, that we can now do this. And two, as, as Mr. White said, there may be some projects that are pretty straightforward, they're small-scale, that are just over an acre in size that we could do in-house, much like we do site plans and things like that. We use Culpeper Solar Water Conservation District on the U N S. There may be larger projects, like if somebody's building a mixed-use development, they can use regional B M Bs, I mean, large-scale ones that all the developers, that may be beyond our, I would say is beyond our in-house. And those developments would then be, we'd go through this third-party process. We'd still be, I would serve as the stormwater management program administrator, I have to be certified, so I have to go through some coursework and pass a test. Same thing with the erosion semi-control. I, I was an U N S administrator at one point in my career, so it, it's just understanding the, the laws. So I, I think we can get there, my thing, because there, there's a lot of pent-up frustration with the development community. If you all would give me some authority to do an R F P, to see if I might be able to find a suitable form, firm to do this, and then allow me to come kind with us, with a scope of work, rates, and those kind of things to get us going, I could bring that back to you.
Do you want the R F P approval now, or do you want to wait till we get to see it?
I want to, I want you to allow me to issue, well, if you all want to see the R F P, that, I could probably have something in the next meeting. Or I could just send it out to you before I go, and then come back to you with a recommended
One, I'd, I'd like to see it sooner than later, also going through the four separate pages. With the exception With the exception of Culpeper County and Clark County, there's some towns. Everybody else is doing it themselves, they're not using DEQ, out of the Northern District of DEQ, which we are part of, and.
And that's part of the problem.
That's part of the problem, uh, that's all I could find in the Northern District. For some reason, Quantico uses DEQ.
Yeah, the towns have an ability either to do it themselves, or go to the county, or go to DEQ.
Prince William County does their own, but for some reason, town of Quantico does their own, but everybody else does it themselves.
I can have a draft RFP at the next meeting for you all to approve, which means you all get it next week.
I'm not sure, I mean, are we talking, why don't we just let them do it now?
The, the RFP is gonna say services.
You have an example, shouldn't that, yeah, it'll be modeled after the King George one.
Yeah, it'll be modeled, let me just read, the day-to-day community, they're looking for a lot more of a, somebody to do site plan reviews and zoning permits, but they also adhere, uh, review of site plans, rezoning, subdivision, et cetera, for compliance with the zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, stormwater ordinance, Chesapeake Bay back, and other local state there. This one's a little more comprehensive than just stormwater, I would limit ours to stormwater and other related engineering to major developments or something like that. But I can have a draft of, of the guts of this to you pretty quickly.
Should, should we have this e- email or something, and providing comments?
I would like just to get it emailed, so we can move forward with this, because e- even the county itself is suffering severely.
Why, why, why don't we do this, um, let me get something together, get it out to you, uh, as quickly as I can. Um, if I don't hear any negatives or st- stop the bus, I'll go ahead and issue it, and you all.
Should we, should we give him a motion to, uh?
Then you can ratify my issue inside of, after the fact.
Well, we can do a motion that, 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 you know.
Sub- subject to.
Subject to our comments.
Okay, I would move that, uh, we allow him to issue an RFP subject to our comments on the, uh, RFP.
I, I would modify that motion to encourage him to do the RFP sooner than later.
Would you accept that friendly amendment to your motion?
Oh, it's so friendly, second.
Any, any more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, proceed with all due haste.
I, and I will send out, before I leave tonight, a copy of the localities in alphabetical order.
We got, we got it now.
We're good.
Just need to stay from the beginning.
I, I have to remark, I have not had such an experience with the Board of Supervisors. We're a special board, that you are.
Okay.
That gets us up to seven.
We, we have one more minute, anybody have any more board comment or any other items that, uh, we didn't complete?
Actually, David, you have two minutes.
Two minutes, okay.
Not quite.
I don't know any, I, I can't sing, so I can't entertain you. You don't want me to sing.
You can start public comment, as long as you hold it open till the least of it, I mean, if, I don't have to each other to speak.
That sounds like a plan, I'll do that. Let's open the public comment period, anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, um, our speaker is Clint Hyde, and he's affiliated with Madison Gigabit Internet.
Okay, come up to the candid camera, so.
Yeah, we moved it back to five-thirty, he could've gone.
Yeah, you could've been home by then.
He'd have done that, right?
We'd have walked out a bit sooner.
Got the heat down the street, so that was okay. One thing I say, since you just talked about the DEQ stuff, yeah, why don't you hit up Hobbs on that? Cause I can tell you, Madison's not having a good time with DEQ these days, and would probably be interested in an alternative, if or worse. I do not speak for the county, but I can tell you, I've seen conversations at the board meetings, and a lot of people not happy with DEQ these days. But they opted out, didn't want to put, you know, Madison's got about yay much budget, so they don't have money to spend on that themselves, but if there was something they could make part-time use of, I think it was gonna go a little faster, they'd probably really like that opportunity. Yeah, so anyway, entirely, not what I wanted to talk about, but since you brought it up here, I thought, yeah, we oughta, if we could get in on that, probably be a good thing. But I did want to mention, uh, at least, while we were sitting here, Louis Colpeysaw was talking to him. Yes, he was over at the Madison meeting while I came to the Orange meeting, and, uh, and he talked about the same thing I talked about over there. And they all, he said, he said, I didn't, I didn't understand why they were, uh, already knew about this, cause he hadn't told them anything, and so, he said, yeah, at four oh five, I got up for public comment and said, we were doing this thing, and so they already knew that. Anyway, I showed you al- already, uh, maybe real quick again, put door hangers out, uh, Saturday noon on Ridge Road and Saturday on Burnley. Want to do Albano, thank you for the pronunciation fix, um, here in a couple of days, these are basically just about the pending thing and the, please take the surveys, really all it says is, please go take the surveys, it's additional data points to help boost our score opportunity in doing the proposal, right? Those, they want to see kind of busy areas, oh, there's a whole lot of interest over here, and this is what we're proposing, working on, works good. I didn't personally have quite enough detail on that last year when I did my daddy proposal with Madison, so trying to push that forward a little bit this way, uh, this year, uh, for you all. And the other thing I specifically wanted to ask was your permission to put a poster, which I have made, and unfortunately I didn't think to bring with me, that's about three feet square, out, let's say at the gate, uh, by the Trash Collection Center on Route thirty-three, that's in between Barbersville and E-Hart, the reason being, figuring, everybody goes to the Trash Collection Center, everybody's gonna see that, it's very simple, and it says, basically, please take the survey, again, emphasizing we want to have some more data points, if you, and I, uh, Mr. White asked if I emailed it to you, I can do that.
I, I would, I would say two things, I don't mind there being a poster there, uh, I think you need to, you need to talk to Aaron with Public Works about the location of the poster.
Yeah, I don't care where it goes, just something, because that's a place that everybody sees.
And, and I would just ask that you, that, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a little miffed at you for some of the dates you put on there, uh, and then strung them out across my district.
Yeah.
Because I'm, I'm now gonna have to probably answer to some of that, so I would prefer not to have that put on this poster. And just say that we're, that we're, that we're working on, on doing it, but let's leave the dates off, because, you know, you're, you're making a promise of by April of next year, and I frankly don't know that we're gonna be there.
Yeah, that's, I agree, I'm not, not a certainty about that, yeah, okay, I will, I will make sure it doesn't say anything like that at all, uh, before we, before we, anyway, but Mr. White had asked that I send it to you all anyways, I will send a photograph.
He's gonna, he's gonna send me a picture and.
We'll send a photograph of it, so you're sure.
You might, you might look at it and see what, what it says about dates or whatever.
Approval orders, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Great, I'll do that thing, that's all I need to say.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
I would make them.
Close the public comment.
I would make a motion that we adjourn for the evening, sir.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are.